Well, but now, am I reading this wrong? But this says prior to building permits, you want to submit plans. So this doesn't, for this one, it doesn't say anything besides the plans.
My original question was, the constructions that are for building to build a CEO then have to be built by permit, plans to be built in progress.
Oh, I see what, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so it's, you submit the plans prior to building permits.
Okay, we'll pause or something.
So, we could say construct to city specifications prior to CEO. And I think that's the intent, if we need to clarify that.
It does.
Yeah, that's definitely the intent, because that's the way we approach. Yeah.
Should we have brunch today, or what?
Sir?
Should we have brunch today, or what?
I don't know. I have not.
It's 9:03. Can you guys hear me okay? It's 9:03, and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order first establish that we have a forum. We have five members here today, which meets the forum requirements. First item is the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing.
Make a motion to approve.
I would like to get a little bit more information on one of these items, if we could. The preliminary plat for Riverwood West, can we pull that and approve the rest of them? Is that okay with you guys?
I'll amend my motion.
Well, let me make a note, though. In the event that you might not pass it as it's, as it's recommended, it's tied to the Riverwood West final plat. And technically, you can't approve a final plat until there's an approved preliminary plat. So you might pull both of those, and then take action once you've had your questions answered.
Okay, so I'd like to look at items B and C. Do we want to make a motion to approve the rest of the items on the consent agenda, or?
I'm going to rescind my motion.
You could, approving all except B and C, or you could discuss those and then make a motion on all of them at the end of the discussion, either way.
Do we have any additional information on the Riverwood West plat besides these memos?
Are there specific questions you have about those plats?
I'm just seeing the 74 acres of land seems like a lot, and I don't recall seeing that before, and thought it would make sense to take a quick look at it before we approved it.
Can you hear yourself?
Can you hear you?
Yes.
But not Kyle?
No.
No.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Yes.
For the preliminary plat, that was actually revised, they put in a road on the south side going east-west.
Okay.
But it had been an approved preliminary plat there. It's actually in the ETJ, it's not in the city limits.
Right.
Yes, sir. I believe on Paint Rock Road on the north side of that. But other than that, that's all the information I had on it, and then they were going to approve section four.
Good morning. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Good morning. My name is Blake, Building Engineering. Yeah, this is just a revision of it, just to add a street going east and west there. This has been an ongoing project for over 10 years now, actually, so ready to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so you had an approved preliminary plat before.
Yes.
And you've made a modification to it to add a street.
Right, the Tony Trail, the one that goes east and west right there, a little short piece.
In the middle of the plat?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
It remained consistent by and large with the rest of the preliminary plat, so it all added up good.
Okay. That looks okay with me. Anyone else have questions? All right, so we're still on the, still have public comment. Anyone else want to speak on the consent agenda items? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as written.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's five zero. Regular agenda subdivision plats. Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. FP 22-15, The View at the Bluffs. Request for approval of a final plat, The View at the Bluffs, being 3.293 acres located northwest of Stratford Avenue and FM 2288.
Good morning, Commission. Kyle Warren, Planning Development. So this is the first replat, The View at the Bluffs. It's 3.293 acres, like Chair Stribling says, at the intersection of Stratford Avenue and FM 2288, District 6, Larry Miller and the Bluffs neighborhood. And this is the aerial image to the left. And this is an image of the plat, or the replat, and though they're not requesting any variances, it was kind of an odd duck in the sense that the connectivity, I can't point to it right now, it's out of juice, but on this side of the plat to Stratford Avenue was kind of in question. It just abuts to some right-of-way on Skyview Lane. And we did talk to the applicant. They said they will show connectivity to Stratford, but as it stands, this was the replat we were given to show. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Okay.
So it looks like this side, or this tract is oriented north and south. Is that?
That's correct. This is actually tilted.
And so the connectivity you were alluding to was on the southern end?
Correct.
Okay.
On Stratford Avenue.
Is that road, does that road exist?
Yes, sir. And I think one of the issues the applicant had talked about was this drainage easement that kind of goes around the entire plat from the north side down to the south. Like I said, I wish I could point to it right now. But it's just the fact that there, the plat kind of cuts off before you see the connectivity, and I was going to get to that, but it's a Monday right now. Jeff, did she say anything about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got two more. I think so far, so good.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. And our recommendation is to approve the first replat of You at the Bluffs, being 3.293 acres with six conditions of approval. Aaron, if you will, thank you. Just some typical conditions, really, it's six that was the big one, just the revised plat that indicates Skyview Lane, which is that north-south road that's going to connect directly to Stratford Avenue. That's kind of vague on that replat. The rest are just standard plat conditions that you can read. But really, that's the reason why we brought this one for presentation, just because it was odd in its connectivity to the south. Otherwise, we would have just put it on consent, but we wanted to show this to the commission. And I know Erica is here to talk about it, if you have any questions for her, or if you have any questions for me right now.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment.
Hello, Erica Wildy with CFE. This was always intended to connect to Stratford. The way that land is, the surveyor is still working out the kinks of how that should look, but there was always the intent of connecting to Stratford.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? If so, please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Looks relatively straightforward, from what I can tell.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Assuming this is a typo and it should be FP, or is it PP 2206? Preliminary, oh, it's preliminary plat, excuse me, it's not a final plat. Preliminary plat of the Wall Volunteer Fire Department, a request for approval of a preliminary plat of Wall Volunteer Fire Department, being 32.151 acres, located northwest of US 87 and FM 1223, and a variance from Chapter 9 2B of the subdivision ordinance to allow a block length to exceed 2,200 feet in a residential area.
Thank you, Chair Stribling, planning commissioners. Jeff Fisher, chief planner. Our next plat is a preliminary and a final plat of the Wall Volunteer Fire Department.
Do you want me to read the final plat in?
Yes, yes, sir.
FP 22-17, final plat of Wall Volunteer Fire Department, a request for approval of a final plat of Wall Volunteer Fire Department, being 1.5 acres, located northwest of US 87 and FM 20, excuse me, 1223.
All right, thank you. So this plat was triggered by the Volunteer Fire Department, and Wall wants to build a new fire station, and so they purchased one and a half acres out of the entire approximately 33-acre property. When they did that, they left a giant remainder. It's a lady that owns a house on the remainder, and so that triggered. In order for her not to have to make any improvements, and for them to move forward, they're doing a preliminary plat for all of it, and then the Wall Fire Department will just have that one little blue lot on the corner of the screen. Next slide. Thank you so much, Aaron. So that's the picture of the plat. In addition to the two lots, a variance is requested. So in the subdivision ordinance, we have a requirement that in residential areas, including in the ETJ, that you have to have a street that breaks up the expanse between 2,200 feet. So if you're, if you don't have a street between 2,200, then you essentially block, you don't have that connectivity. And so with the preliminary plat, we've asked to have a street that comes through the preliminary plat north-south that will connect Fairway School Road to the north and then US 87 to the south. So the problem is, the nearest street right now is Fairway School Road to the left, and that's 1,600 feet away. And then 4995 is the other one, so I think I drew that wrong. It's more than that on the, on the left, so my bad. I'll have to see why, what happened there. But basically, it's longer than 2,200 without a street connection. So that's what we're asking for. If there is a variance option, of course, but we believe that having those local streets, and you can see Fairway School and some of those other streets, most of them are either, they might be local roads, they might be collector roads, we're just asking for a local road. If the applicant of the preliminary plat never goes to redevelop her lot, she'll never have to build it. It's just that we just want it drawn on there, and so that's, that's the issue today. Next slide. Thanks, Aaron. Rationale for variance. We believe that not putting in that street, this is a residential and agricultural area, it is a mix, but over time, it's going to eventually, you know, either it's going to get annexed, or people are going to replat. We have plating authority in the ETJ, and so there's that potential as this area gets more built up, we're going to need another local street. If we never put one in, then we could have, you know, miles and miles without any connecting streets. So that was the concern there. There's no uniqueness, there's no topographical issues. We just believe the variance would set a negative precedent. Next slide. So staff recommends denial of the preliminary plat, and denial of the variance to not require local street connection through the preliminary plat that would reduce the residential block length to less than 2,200, and then denial of the final plat for the fire department. So that's pretty much the, the issues that we're, we're looking at. Any questions or comments on this one?
Anyone have questions?
So talk about the street again. You're saying you just want it drawn on there? It doesn't matter if it's ever built?
Yeah, and let me just correct, on the first map, the aerial map that I had up. Sorry, Aaron, thanks. The, in, two more afterwards. That should be 2,600, not 1,600. So basically, if they put one in, they'll have, they'll have one connecting within that, within that length.
Where would the road connect?
The road, the road would be, the road could be somewhere in the, in the middle. So actually, I, I'm sorry, I was right. It's 1,600 to the corner, but if you go all the way to the east side of the property, you're going to exceed 2,200. So that's what it is. So roughly, if they put it somewhere in the middle of that black lot and go south, north-south, they'll meet the intent. Now, they're never going to meet the 4995, and obviously, because that's impossible, but at least they resolve half of the issue, and they have a street within 2,200 feet of Fairway School Road. So it is right, it is 1,600, but from that left side of that 1,600 to the east side of the lot is going to be more than that. So just by putting in that, that road within 2,200, they resolve that issue.
Okay, so I want, I want to go back a little bit and be really clear about what we're, what you're asking to do.
Okay.
These are future roads that have not been cut in, in the, in the blue dot, the blue dashed lines. Is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. The, the dash lines that you see there are, the blue ones are collector roads.
Okay.
So the local roads don't show up on the thoroughfare plan, but they're still.
But those are, those are roads that are in the current plan, future plan for this area?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And you can't have a block length more than 2,200 feet?
Correct, correct. You have, you, you have to put in a road within 2,200.
For fire life safety reasons.
For fire life safety reasons, for pedestrian, or excuse me, for vehicular traffic connectivity, just other basic, the basic argument is if you don't do it, you put all the drain on the arterial and the freeways and the collectors, and everybody in subdivisions are coming out and spilling onto one street, which is pretty much North America. So having those local street connectors are important to provide that breakup in, in traffic.
Okay, and there are no north-south roads proximal or in the plat that's, that's, that's being replatted for the fire department. Is that correct?
That's right, that's right. So they don't ever have to build that road. The road would go into the lot too. They would never actually have to build it until they go to redevelop that property. But they do need, if they don't show it, then the preliminary plat gets approved without the road. There's no guarantee that somebody will ever build that road, and then.
So you're looking at existing roads?
Yes.
And you've gone to the west?
That's right.
And noted that there's 1,600 feet from the closest road to the west to this site? Is that what that, what is the 1,600 feet?
Yes, so the closest road is Fairway School Road. So I was right the first time, it's 1,600, but then from that point to the end of the property is more than 2,200.
Got it. And it's almost 5,000 feet from the eastern boundary of this property to the next road that exists.
To FM 20, to FM 1223, correct. So they're never going to meet that one, which they can't.
Right.
So the intent of the ordinance is to meet the, meet the standard where you, where you can meet the standard. So then the property to the east would be the one that would, if they go to redevelop, they would have to build a road at some point. Probably logical would be to have those collector, those blue dash lines connect at some point, would be my thoughts.
So if they go to redevelop the remainder, wouldn't they come back with a new plat, preliminary plat? I mean, presumably, they'd be carving it up into, into lots.
But it's, it would be a final plat, or would it be a new preliminary plat? Or could it be either?
Yeah, so if, if they stay the way they are, they're good. If they, if they come back and, because they could, they're in the ETJ, there's no zoning, so once they get that preliminary plat approved, they could do a final plat over that 32.15 acres, and develop that entire lot with anything they want right now, because there's no zoning, and we'll never get that road. If they come back and replatted and do, let's say, a final plat that cuts that big 32-acre piece into five lots, then yes, we would consider at that time, does that road need to be realigned, or should that road stay there? Our concern is if we don't get it now, you know, and all of us are, you know, in 10 years are gone, or 20 years, and then somebody else comes in, that, you know, we might miss that opportunity, that's all.
But what we're looking at right now is, there's one house on there, the rest of it is being farmed at this time. So that's what is going on now until we have no idea when. So I don't see that we need a road for the future. If they're going to build on that later, it'll still be in the area where they need to come in for building permits or whatever, in the ETJ, so I don't think it needs a road.
They're not, you're not asking them to build a road, you're asking them to designate a road within their.
That's correct, and I think Luke makes a good point, that unless they were going to final plat that other piece as one large lot in the future, they would have to come back for a preliminary plat. So if your inclination is to grant the variance to not have to show the road at this point, we might ask that you clarify that, that that is not an intent to say, say that they never have to build that road, but that it would be looked at again if they come back with a revised preliminary plat at whatever point in the future.
So that, yeah, because the PP 2206 is the preliminary plat of the whole acreage, the 31.151. The final plat, all we're doing on the final plat is doing the 1.5 acres that the fire department needs to have their substation.
That's right.
Okay.
And they could, they could move forward and develop the 30.6 acres that are left, but they couldn't subdivide it without submitting a revised plat?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jeff. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address, or single member district.
Good morning. Charles Mike Levis. I live at 7349 South Ratliff Road. I'm here today in my capacity as Wall Volunteer Fire Department Vice President. I have a few comments just written down on the variance.
Sure.
So what we're looking at here in regards to public safety, we're looking at a pretty old plan that we're basing this off of for the residential of this area. And even in 2004, it was said that this area lost 100-plus residents. Now, planning thinks it's going to intensify, and I agree with them, but at what time? They're saying 10 years, 20 years, when they're maybe not here, but the preliminary plat's only good for five years anyway. I mean, and if, if this ever is annexed, it'll come to y'all for zoning, and I think along that highway, you're going to be looking at commercial zoning on the frontage, if you don't have commercial zoning on the full property. It's only 32 acres. I mean, if you look down 277, or even out 67 over here, you got the same thing going on. So it's in the opinion of the wall board that this subdivision shouldn't require a street, and that we're leaving the remaining track. And just to be clear, we do not own, fire department does not own that remaining track. That still remains Ms. Woodington's property, and she owns quite a bit of that all around there. So there's no other public or any other properties to be detrimental to as far as public safety at this time. As to the second, where this is a unique property, it is a unique property. Ms. Woodington donated this land to the fire department. She has no intent of developing the rest of the property. The only area that we want to develop is that lot to have it access to 87, to get good response time down 277. We've had a lot of vehicle accidents down there. It takes 15 minutes for most of us to get to the wall, another 15 minutes back to 277. This would reduce that tremendously. What we're asking here for, we're actually coming to you for a non-residential use. So to say that this is a residential area may be a little short-sighted. I mean, we're three and a half miles from town. This, this side of town could certainly use a large commercial development, similar to Walmart, Sam's, all those areas on the other side of town. And those developments are probably 75 acres, so that's well, this area's well under what a commercial, large commercial development would be, and it's right off of the highway. Regardless of that, we don't know what this property is going to be. It's not in our hands, and fire department doesn't have any control over the property other than that acre and a half that was given to us. So we don't have any determination of what that's going to be in the near future, and I'd be surprised if it develops in the next five years, which the plat's only good for five years for the preliminary plat. We agree, sure, there's no physical requirements that, or detriments that would require us from not doing the. The other thing going down to the ordinances, so we agree that the jail will have plenty of opportunity in future to require that the development meets all the ordinances when somebody comes back to develop it for a specific use, or when somebody actually decides what they're going to do there. Requiring the road now actually gives you an opportunity to circumvent some other ordinances, such as double frontage lots, or access for lots off of 87, where somebody could build a Cleechy road off of 87 directly to a house, or something like that, both of which obviously would go against city ordinance. The other thing is, they could, we could plat this road at that 2,200 foot, and then the owner of this property could come back and do preliminary plats to divide up smaller portions, leaving out that, that road that's in the preliminary plat, and it still never gets built. So our, our request would allow the future owner of that property, or the future developer of that property, to decide where that road goes. The variance would not affect the land use pattern. The variance would not be detrimental to public welfare at this time. The variance would not allow any uses that are not allowed in the area, and it, this variance would allow Ms. Woodington to meet her goal that she wanted to accomplish, which was donating land to the fire department for public welfare, safety, and savings. She has no intention of selling or further developing the area at this time. And then I'd like to point out that the substation will save the nearby residents and Fairway School a large amount of money on their insurance costs because of the improved response time in the area. So I would like to ask that you grant the variance, not require the local street on the preliminary plat, but use this opportunity to approve the preliminary plat as shown with written provisions for future development. plat as shown with written provisions for future development per Section 1B2 to show that all future plats and re-subdivisions will be required to satisfy the provisions of the ordinance and follow up with approval of the final plat as presented for the Wall Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Good morning. My name is David McAtter. I live at 7345 South Ratliff Road. And I'm the Assistant Fire Chief of Wall Fire Department. I wanted to, Charles has covered our part pretty well, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about how long this has been under plan. For more than 12 years, we planned trying to get this done. Uh, we operate off of donations and, uh, some grants, and this has finally, uh, become, became a dream. It's going to happen. Uh, we, this will cut our east or west side response by at least nine or 10, 11 minutes, which is substantial if your house is on fire.
Yes.
Uh, we have no plans. We have no hidden agenda here. We're simply trying to help people.
Yes, sir.
Uh, our department, I've been, uh, a member of the Wall for early, since early '99, and, uh, we have responded many times to the city because we have a mutual aid agreement with the City of San Angelo as well as Goodfellow Air Force Base, as well as nine departments within the county, the other nine volunteer fire departments. We have gone many miles outside the county to help people. We, that's what we do. Um, we got the land finally donated after being turned down multiple times. This land is in a, in an area that is very important to our response to the west side of our district. From east to west, we're approximately 23 miles wide. You can imagine trying to cover that. We cover 474 square miles, the largest in the district in the county. We wish to serve our customers better. Um, we, we've responded in the city, just to give you an idea, because most people don't know, we've responded to wildland fires, calls for assistance, for mutual aid. We've shuttled water to large fires where the hydrants were not substantial, uh, are, are not enough, uh, to fight those large fires. We've even hauled water to community hospital during a city main break because our tanker is aluminum and it is good for potable water. We have manned low water crossings within the city. We've never, to my knowledge, in 23 years, turned down the city for help. We are simply asking you to let us help people and to help you possibly in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this? I'm going to close public comment and, uh, take a motion or someone wants to?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the preliminary and the final plat and to approve the variance.
Vice Chair Jackson, did you want me to read in the conditions first?
Sure.
That we had? Okay. So, on the preliminary plat, um, well, actually, I guess it depends on your motion. If you want to remove the street, then that condition number one would come off.
Correct.
So, so we would, as of now, depending on what your motion is, would be to illustrate the north-south local street, uh, revise the plat. Those are, so it, we really give them a choice. They should just, the language should be consistent on the titles. So, uh, Whittington is the name of the owner on the large piece, and then Wall is going to, has the one and a half. So, they can call both of them, Wall Volunteer Fire, or they can both call the Whittington Estates. It's, it's totally up to them. Um, changing some of the title blocks on the preliminary plat. Uh, they had the title blocks for the final plat instead of the preliminary. Again, this is minor stuff that we could condition as approval. And then, um, having a separate drawing that removes the structure is just a clean copy. Uh, then it's just a note from 911 addressing that this is under the jurisdiction of the Concha Valley Council of Governments, uh, until it's annexed or unless it's annexed.
Okay. So, we're going to get rid of number one. I want to approve the preliminary plat and the final plat and approve the variance.
Okay.
So, on the, that number two that you had on there, that would be just cleanup work in the office, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second?
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
Then we'll do the final plat?
That, well, I did already. I did it all last night.
Oh, was it both? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
I jumped ahead.
Okay. Rezonings. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings. Item A is Z22-12 Bentwood Enclave Court, a request for approval of a rezoning from a low-rise multifamily residential RM1 and general commercial zoning districts to the single-family residential RS1 zoning district being 25.061 acres located southwest of Wolf Creek Drive and Crystal Point Drive.
This, like Chair Stribling said, is Z22-12 Bentwood Enclave Court. Uh, it's 25.061 acres near Enclave Court and Wolf Creek Drive, which are now recently connected. Um, try to get this to work. There's Enclave and there's Wolf Creek. So, they come down in like that now. Um, sorry, going like that. And one thing about this particular rezone is that there is already a final plat approved, I think, two years ago for residential lots. And it was, we kind of just put the, uh, cart before the horse on this. Uh, and it, also, we didn't, no one understood why it was zoned like this in the first place, why there's a little, you know, corner of general commercial in the northeast. Um, but at any rate, that's what's going forward. Uh, the future land use, it's all neighborhood. It's all down by the country club. So, it's congruent with that. And the, um, the black outlines are the properties that are falling within the zone change. Not all of that, as I go back, it's just this little corner here. But those three properties are the ones that are associated with it. Um, and this was a notification map we sent out, 38 letters within 200 feet. And this is kind of hard to see for presentation purposes. So, I did include a more viewed in, or scaled in map. Um, we did get nine in support, none in opposition. And all nine of those are from the Bentwood Country Club LLC. That was just property they owned in the area. Um, very straightforward on this one. These are the site images. As you can tell, they're already grading the land, prepping for buildings. This is looking at the south and one from the north. Um, not really much to say for that. Um, and the rationale is it all complied with the zoning ordinance. Had a little effect, natural environment. There's actually a retention pond already there. Um, the development pattern matches everything around it. It's surrounded by RS1 and it's compatible with the surrounding area in the sense that it's all a single-family residential and that's what it's going to. And our recommendation is to approve Z22-12. Um, and that's the zone change from the multifamily residential and general commercial zoning districts to the single-family residential zoning district. Any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Kyle.
Yes, sir.
We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case?
I'm pleased to ask, I'm the owner of the 5238 six property. Uh, I just really have a question. What, what is a buffer zone and how does it affect my property?
Let the staff answer that one.
Apologies. Um, a buffer zone is just a notification area that the state makes us do when there's a, a rezone. So, it's just 200 feet, any properties within, uh, 200 feet of the properties that are being rezoned, you get notified just to let you know, hey, there's a rezoning going on near you. It has nothing to do with your property per se. Like, your property itself is not being rezoned. There's no, um, things affecting your personal property. It's just, so we send out a notification so you can analyze and say, I'm in favor of this. I'm against it. I don't care. Um, but we have to do that by, by state law.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Uh, another, I've been referring to you guys, since I bought the property five years ago, I've been trying to get a 911 address. And, uh,
Okay.
I went through, uh, council of governments, got frustrated with that, waited about three or four years, tried again. Then they ended up referring to me, to you guys, uh, that there was some question as to whether I was trying to put a development in an 8.3 acre area. So, I'm not putting a development in. I'd just like to, you know...
You'd like to have an address?
Yes. I'd like to have an address.
Okay.
I had this couple of discussions.
Can you guys help with that?
The property that you were trying to get an address, sir, was that vacant land?
No. Was it vacant land?
Yes.
It has a storage building on it.
Because, yeah, nor, normally if it's, if it's vacant or unplatted land, unless you're, um, plating the property, you would, you wouldn't be able to get an address and...
I can't get a 911 address?
You, you can, but like if it was vacant unplatted land, it was just a meets and bounds survey?
Yeah.
And now you wanted to put a house or a structure on it, you would, before that could happen, you would have to subdivide the property legally. Uh, we could talk after the meeting, I guess, and find out more specifics, help you out a little bit.
Well, let's do that.
Okay.
All right.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right. I'm going to close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Item B, Z22-13, part of 300 blocks of West Avenue A and West Avenue B, a request for approval of rezoning from the two-family residential zoning district to the low-rise multifamily residential district and general commercial zoning district being 1.08 acres located southeast of South Coneyheim Street and West Avenue A.
All right. Uh, thank you, Commission. Uh, so this case, uh, Z22-13, uh, was triggered by, uh, an applicant who owns, um, I'll get a bigger, better picture in a minute, but these, these lots over here, there were two units on the property and there was a third. Um, they went to make some adjustments on the third unit and it was determined that the third unit wasn't legal. The zoning is RS2. So, in order to legalize that third unit, uh, they requested a zone change to RM1. As part of that zone change, the city looked at that entire block and realized RM1 is really highest and best used for all of the properties. There was a short-term rental up here that's got several units. Uh, there are large single-family homes over here that they could also redevelop. So, rather than just having a one lot that's RM1, we just said, let's just do the whole block RM1. Um, this, in addition to that, there's this one piece of the parking lot for Crockett Bank. Somehow it, it stayed zoned RS2 even though it's a commercial parking lot. So, as part of that, we're cleaning that up too, rezoning that to CG to help Crockett. So, that way Crockett will be entirely CG, including the parking area. The rest of this will be RM1. And just to clarify, RM1 allows single-family homes, two-family homes, uh, twin home and zero lot line and multifamily. So, three or more. So, this will get, um, uh, these guys where they want to go. It'll get Crockett where they want to go and clean up the block. So, that's what we're, we're looking at today. The future land use is downtown and the current zoning is CG, uh, and RS2. We sent out 22 notices. Um, I got a couple of phone calls just asking for information, but nobody responded in support or opposition. So, this is the plan. Um, all of this right now is RS2. So, this would go to RM1, uh, all of the orange. And again, uh, the three units is right here. This is a house. This is a house. There's two units there, uh, formerly a short-term rental. The CG is the area for parking for, for, um, Crockett. So, pretty simple, pretty straightforward. Uh, these are looking at the pictures. So, uh, here's the third unit in question. Um, it was in really bad shape. So, they, uh, believe they moved it, uh, and then had to fi, uh, fix it again. Let me just go back one. So, it's basically that, that, um, structure right there. In order to legalize that structure, they needed to do this. Uh, there's the empty parking lot for Crockett that, again, it starts about here and it went to RS2. So, this will just go to CG. And there's the couple other houses that we talked about. It's designated downtown in the land use plan. CBD was another option we talked about because it also allows residential, but we're about four blocks out. So, again, with CBD, we really want to keep it going continuously. So, RM1 is the fix for now. It's a great transition from the commercial corridor on Coneyheim and then the residential area to the east. So, having allowance for two-family or multifamily here is a, um, is appropriate, we believe. Staff recommends approval from RS2 to RM1, uh, on the properties in question, that 0.943 acres, and then CG on just the Crockett parking lot area of 0.137 acres. Uh, just a note that the applicants, uh, will be required to plat this property. Um, there's a piece of it that's, uh, it's basically one and a half lots. I know it's not the best picture there, but, um, essentially there's a remainder over here and they want to put the accessory building on the remainder. So, uh, we've talked to them about that and we'll help them through that process if the zoning is approved. This concludes staff's presentation. Any questions or comments?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, is the applicant for the multifamily zoning, do they own all of the lots that are being rezoned?
They do not. They own, uh, number 11. We did get a call from number five and I, they were okay with it. They just wanted some information. Um, 22 and 10 didn't call us back.
Okay. And then in the photographs, um, 10, I believe, is a two-story brick structure. Do you have pictures of that by chance?
I think I do.
That one right there?
Yep.
Do you know the current use of that structure?
My understanding, it's, it's single-family when I did the research.
A single-family home?
Yes.
Okay.
But this, this RM1 would essentially, they could come in and cut that up into, um, most of the lots, because they're small, there's a density maximum of 25 units an acre in RM1. So, they could do multiple units, but they may be stuck at three anyway. But again, it's three, three's better than two, as if you're looking at doing that.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Jeff, changing that for these other, uh, property owners that don't, that are not aware of the change, is, how is that going to affect them or will it affect them in any way?
They won't lose any property rights. They'll gain more property rights. So, their single-family homes are still protected. And the Concha Quarters, it used to be Concha Quarters to the north. I understand he's not using it as a short-term rental anymore, but there's still two, at least two legal units there. So, that would still be allowed as well. So, anything that's a duplex right now, including the, the coasters would be allowed. And then a triplex would, or three-unit building would also be allowed. So, they don't lose anything by doing this.
I just want to clarify, you, you, I don't know if you misspoke, but you said the, the people that aren't aware of this, they all did get, uh, notices in the mail.
Notices in the mail, I don't know, but still, you had one person, two people call you. Uh, the notices in the mail are not always real, um, I don't know. It, they, they draw questions, you know?
Sure.
So, that's, that's what I meant. Maybe they got a letter, but they, I don't know. I just want to make sure that they're aware of what's going on with their properties.
Yeah. And we measured all the lot sizes and setbacks and everything. So, everything that either meets or if it doesn't meet, it was grandfathered. So...
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Jeff. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward. State your name and address or single member district.
My name is Frank Kester. I live at 11461 Twin Lakes Lane. Um, we've owned this property for close to 15 years. Um, it was rezoned in 2018 and we had no idea that it was rezoned. Um, the buildings themselves were built in the 1920s and the garage, it was a garage apartment, but I guess it was just called a garage. And it was built for a horse buggy. And so, what we had done, we were trying to raise the building so it could be used as a normal garage. And in the high winds, uh, the contractor had a problem. Nobody got hurt and the building twisted and fell into the alley. And so, the, uh, fire department was going to tear out the building, but our contractor was able to get it out of the alley and get it onto the lots. And we had made some calls. We had the setbacks. And then we started, all of a sudden discovered that, oh, this is an illegal unit. And so, we did some more... And so, we did some more research, and we've been paying the water bill for all three units. And now, we can actually make it all legal, everybody can have their own addresses, and they can have their own water bills. And so, we would like to make it legal, and we really appreciate Mr. Fisher. He has been, I can't say enough, and I keep bragging about him to Harry Thomas and everybody else I can talk to about him, but this has really been a pleasure. We moved here from Oregon, and I have never seen city work efficiently. Because I dealt with the Historic District in Salem, Oregon, and it was not as pleasurable as this has been. So, I don't have anything else to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Now, I think personally that this makes sense, given the office building next door on the front edge on Cohnheim. I've always thought that multifamily is a good buffer between more intense commercial development and single-family. So, I think, I think this is a fit for, for what's proposed. Does anyone wish to make a motion or have questions?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Next case, item C, Z22-14, 200 block of West Avenue L. A request for approval of a rezoning from general commercial, heavy commercial, to low-rise multifamily and general commercial zoning districts, being 1.24 acres located south of West Avenue L, between South Randolph and Hill Street, San Angelo, Tom Green County.
Thank you, Chair Stribling, Planning Commission. Our next case today, Z22-14, similar to the previous case, a little bit different. Also, there was a trigger from an individual applicant that has purchased this half of a platted lot, and then this full lot over here, and wants to redevelop it. There's an existing home on this remainder lot here, which is deficient in size, and then they wanted to do four units up here, and they have the lot size. So, what they're going to do is, if they get the zoning, they want to rezone this area from CGCH to RM1, and then split this line across, so then there'd be a rectangle here for the fourplex, and then the rectangle there would keep the existing home and make that lot sufficiently sized. So, as part of that, again, the city looked at this block and had some more recommendations. So, the neighborhood, future land use supplies here, but the zoning is CGCH. Why did that happen? Because the zoning came before our comprehensive plan in 2003. So, the zoning was already CGCH, which includes that heavy commercial. We don't really want heavy commercial there because it's predominantly a residential area. So, and the fact that it's neighborhood supports the RM1. So, we looked at, again, this whole block. So, they've only applied for these two lots to go to RM1. City wants to extend that RM1. We wanted to extend it all the way down here, but this owner objected. He's got two homes, but he wants to knock them down and turn it into commercial. So, in the end, this is what we came up with. RM1 would be on these lots over here. Number 16 has objected, though, and then CG over here. So, the CGCH would be cleaned up. This is a restaurant, so it would stay a restaurant. These two, 13 and 13, are homes. So, these, Mr. Jagoba had talked to me last week about maybe redeveloping all of this for commercial. So, this would all go to CG. The H would, the H would come out, and then all of this would be RM1. So, this, again, would, all of these lots would allow what they want to do, protect all the single-family homes that are already there, allow them to redevelop and build a fourplex up here, keep this house the way it is. The three opposition letters, they didn't say much, they were just concerned. I did pass those around. Again, the one, these two over here are within the 200 feet, but not subject to the zoning. This one is subject to the zoning.
We don't have the letters.
No, okay.
No, sir. I'm going to start with Sam.
The one that did write some commentary, the other ones just checked the boxes, they were opposed, but the one was just concerned about safety and children and things like that. So, these are some of the pictures in the area. So, this is the corner lot here. These two that are being redeveloped that triggered this. Then, as you go along Avenue L, you can see there's existing homes, and then right on the corner is that restaurant. So, again, the future land use is neighborhood, so really, the CGCH over time is going to go away, and you're going to start seeing more residential development. So, we think the RM1 is appropriate. That said, the one owner that wants commercial in the future, and it also owns the restaurant at the corner, we thought CG was, downzoning from CGCH to CG was appropriate, just on those lots. That way, the heavy commercial comes out of the area, they can still develop it commercially, and then we get RM1 for the rest.
Can you go back to the tracks?
Sure.
Say this again?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think so. Sam has, I think, comments from one of the residents that he'd like to share.
Sure.
Sorry about that, I wasn't sure if this is possible or not, because I'm new to this, but he's saying that there's some illegal, the property was sold illegally, that they're going through a district attorney, and that they were shown short notice. The, a lot of the neighbors were shown short notice, and he wants to keep it, what's it called, commercial?
Do you know which property is you're talking about on the map?
200 block of Avenue L.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
200 block of Avenue L.
Okay, so maybe one of these ones over here?
Yeah, he says that the residents want to keep it commercial, but they had a very short notice, the letter's on the way.
Okay.
I just wasn't sure if this was able to present this, because I know the guy, he had a mail to lose.
Yeah, so basically, the, as you know, all the ones within the 200 feet, so these two over here will not be affected by the zone change. So, they're just with, like Kyle's case, they're just within the 200-foot buffer, but they're not affected. So, the only ones that are affected are in the black area over here. So, all of this is CGCH. This is going to RM1, that's orange, and then the pink is going from CGCH to CG. And we pulled out these two, but we were also going to do RM1. We kept those as CG so that, to accommodate this gentleman who would receive the letter.
So, the current zoning for this is CGCH?
That's correct.
And what's the, what's the plan?
Future land use is neighborhood.
Neighborhood?
Yes.
Is RM1 part of neighborhood?
Yes.
And the idea of staff was, if we don't want to go all to neighborhood-type zoning that would be compatible with the plan, at least on the CGCH, we would get rid of the heavy commercial and drop it down to CG, which is a little more neighborhood, not necessarily neighborhood-friendly, but at least more so than the heavy commercial.
Okay.
And have you heard from the owner on number 13?
On number 13? I did, yes.
With the CG?
We originally wanted, because the restaurant is the very corner over here, these two little ones, we wanted to do RM1 on these two as well. He objected, and we said, okay, well, since the notice was written flexibly, we would just take those, and he agreed to CG. So, he's comfortable with that, and that gets him where he wants to go. This is a restaurant, if he does retail here, he can do that as well. And again, just to confirm, all of the RM1, they, anybody that's got single-family homes, do not lose their rights to single-family homeowners, which, because single-family is allowed in RM1.
Right.
So, this is just giving them more flexibility if they want to turn it into two-family or even three-family in the future.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on this case? If so, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. This is difficult. So, we have an applicant, is 4 the applicant?
Yes, correct. 4 is the applicant, which triggered this, and then the city is doing the rest, 16, 17, and 13.
But 16 is in opposition to having it rezoned?
Yes. So, the other option is, we, you know, the RM1 could just apply to 4. And then, the, now, the question then is, I, the problem is, is that those ones, I guess, would, they'd still be lawful conditional uses in the CG, but then you kind of leave that piece out. What we don't want, is we don't want 16 and 17 to stay CGCH. We don't want the heavy commercial there. So, I don't know if we'd be comfortable with CG on those. But again, the RM1 is actually helping them and legalizing them, the CG...
Well, the problem, Jeff, is that we're rezoning property that we don't have applicants in here to object to. So, there's, you know, trying to protect property rights to an extent here. Obviously, CGCH is not a fit for this area because of its intensity. CG on that block is really not a fit for what's surrounding it. Property 8 is a multifamily apartment complex, I believe. 26 is vacant land? Is that correct?
I, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I can't find that 26.
Above.
Straight north.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Are they zoned CGCH 26?
I think they're actually industrial.
Industrial.
Yeah.
Light manufacturing, in L.
Yeah, and the challenge too is, we understand, if we do only one lot, then we've kind of, you're kind of stuck with the problem of having CGCH across the street, and then you only have one lot that goes to RM1, so you're kind of pushing, just singling out just that one corner. But, on the other hand, I see your, Chair Stribling's point too, of course, about, you know...
I agree with Travis that we need to just concentrate on those three lots that the, that we have application for, number 4, and leave the others alone.
So, would you be open to the pink going to CG, or leave everything CGCH, and then just do the RM1 on number 4?
I would just do the RM1 on number 4.
Let me just remind you of one more point, that when the, when the zoning ordinance was adopted, the city council adopted a policy of CGCH was supposed to go away. We're not allowed to rezone anything to CGCH in the future. And the goal was for all CGCH to be rezoned, either to heavy commercial, if that was appropriate, or CG, if that was appropriate. So, given that, I think we would strongly recommend, at least just, if it's commercial now, keep it commercial, but go to the CG instead of CGCH. Obviously, that, that's up to you all, but this is a little bit different than some zonings, because the CGCH was designated as a zoning district that was intended to go away.
I know, and CGCH is, is very broad and not good from a land planning standpoint.
Right.
Do you have an opposition number 16 already?
I was going to say, the problem is that we have folks that have secured their property rights with zoning in place, and what we're, what you guys have proposed to do is to, is to basically strip some of those rights from them, because someone in the block is rezoning.
Did number 16 approach, just oppose the RM, not the CG? So, if 16 remains CG and we only focused on 4...
That was going to be my comment, that 13, when they came in and said, hey, we don't really want to go to RM, we want to keep our commercial, so we, we said, okay, that's fine, we'll keep it CG. I believe that's the same circumstance that 16 is in. I don't think they would be opposed to the CG. It's the going, getting rid of the commercial and going to the multifamily.
So, the intent would, to rezone 4 to the RM, and then from 16 all the way through 13, make them CG?
Correct.
The problem with making those CG today is that the future land use plan is neighborhood.
Correct.
So, we're not, we're not really helping, we're not, we're not going in the direction of, of our future plan. If we've rezoned at CG, we've just stripped some of the rights from those guys for some of the more intense development.
I think, but, but you would be going at least more in the direction, obviously, it's not compatible with that future plan, but at least we're getting rid of the heavy commercial. And to be clear, there's no heavy commercial in that area. It's just zoning.
Right.
And so, this would at least prevent any sort of heavy commercial from going in, in that neighborhood.
Anyone else have thoughts they'd like to share?
Yeah, we, we see both sides of it, but if, the example that I always use, if you're CGCH, you could have oil-filled equipment there, or you could have industrials, and even some light welding and things like that, and do we want that next to that, that neighborhood? But again, on the other hand, if that's, that's a person's property, and there is CGCH already, maybe that's, so I, we understand.
It's a lot cleaner if the applicant is making the request, as opposed to us changing it for a property owner that's not here.
Yes.
And that's, that's really my fundamental issue with what's proposed. I don't, I'd like for the applicants to be here, at least.
Yeah.
And we don't, the only, the only applicant we have is for the, for 4, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is the applicant didn't have no permission to buy the property, maybe that's why they're not here, that the adult protective services are involved also, that they didn't sign off on permissions, so the property, so that might be the reason they're not here.
Okay. So, you're saying the applicant, does the applicant own the land?
No, well, they own the land, but they didn't have permission to buy the land by the elderly person, so they got the attorneys involved, and it's complicated.
So, the applicant may not be the rightful owner of the land, is what you're saying?
We've, we do have, if we're talking about 4, I, I did double-check that, and Zil Properties does own the one and a half lots, and then I believe Artiega still owns this one over here, but when, again, when we, at the time we sent out the letters, the letters matched what was on the appraisal district records. So, again, if, if something's changed after that, absolutely.
What's the timeframe of the letters ever sent?
I think our GS department's updating it every month, or every two months now, so this was, this was accurate as of time we sent it out.
But, as I understand it, what Mr. Gomez is suggesting isn't that they don't own the property, it's that the property sale may have been illegal or incorrect, and so, they're looking at litigation to maybe reverse that, but...
Okay, thank you.
So, knowing that, I don't know what else we could do other than move forward, because our records show that that's the owner, or you could possibly table it if there in fact is some question about the ownership of the property. We could table it and try to get to the bottom of that before moving forward.
Is that what you propose, Sam, is that we table it?
I say we table it.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion to table it?
I'd make a motion to table, the item is, and hold off for now.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table, or continue to the next meeting. John?
Yeah, it's, it's usually better for us to table it to a specific meeting.
Okay, we're going to, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
I'm going to comment.
I'm sorry.
Is there a way that on property number 16, that while you're doing the notifications, that you could see if they were in opposition to CG?
Yeah, we can do that.
Sure.
Because that way, that, that would make it clean, next time we meet, then we could look at, from 16 through 13, making it CG, and, you know, to Mr. Stribling's point, then everyone would be aware.
Okay, sure.
Okay, we have a motion to continue this to our next Planning Commission meeting on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, five zero to continue it. All right, next item. D, Z22-15, 103 and 107, West 14th Street. A request for approval of a rezoning from the two-family residential zoning district to the office commercial zoning... of a rezoning from the two-family residential zoning district to the office commercial zoning district being .23 acres, located southwest of North Irving Street and West 14th Street, San Angelo, Tom Green County.
Uh oh. Spent a rough day with the slides. Thank you, Aaron. Okay. So our next case today is E2215, conditionally used approved for a church on the property. They put up the church building on these two lots over here. It looks like it's working again, hopefully. They attempted a rezoning a little while back, you all might remember earlier this year, to go to CN, and the CN would have allowed a coffee shop with the church. They were denied at city council for that. So they've come back now to use a, request a lighter zoning district, so they don't have to wait that full year because they're going to lower intensity. Now they want to do office commercial CO. The CO, they want to do a faith-based bookstore along with the church on the property, so the CO would not, would still not allow that, but it would then give them the option to come back again in a few months and do a conditional use. The conditional use would allow the faith-based bookstore. So the CO just protects the underlying zoning, it'll allow things like offices, dental, medical, and things like that, but not as much intensity as drive-throughs and coffee shops and things that, there were some concerns about it at planning commission and council from you all. So today, you're just looking at going to CO, 0.23 acres. Neighborhood is the future land use on this, and zoning is RS2. So again, we go back to, is this an appropriate use in this neighborhood? We believe that the CO is probably even better than the CN, just because it's lower intensity. Fourteenth is a collector's street, and it is on a corner lot, so the comprehensive plan does allow, in some cases, a commercial or office commercial, things that would be a low-intensity commercial in neighborhoods, like a neighborhood store or a dentist's office nearby. Not in the middle of a block, but usually on a corner where there's a collector. So we believe that this is appropriate in this case, and less opposition than the CN. Twenty-three notices were mailed out. We didn't receive any letters back. Again, I'll go through these quick because most of you have seen this before. This is the church right now. They've got two parking spaces out there. I measured last week, they could probably get about four or five more. So if they do the faith-based bookstore in the future, that's retail, that's one space for every 200 square feet. So if they had 800 square feet of that building, I don't think they'll hit that, but if they did, they could easily get the four parking spots out there. So meets the zoning, compatible with the neighborhood designation in the comp plan. And again, there is a presence of other non-residential uses in the area, the church at 206, and then the funeral home at 200 West 14. That's just northwest of there by one block. Staff recommends approval from the two-family RS2 to the office commercial zoning district. Any questions or comments?
Anyone have questions for the staff?
I believe the applicants are here.
Thank you, Jeff. We're gonna open it up for public comment.
Good morning. My name is Edward Gonzalez, and this is my wife, Linda.
And where's the owner's iPhone?
And we live at 116, 116 West 14. I think on there it said 103 and 107 is the address of the property in North Irving, but it's really 103 West 14. And we own the three properties across the street, 116, 118, and then the one next to it. And in the interest of time, I've typed up something if I'm able to read it.
Sure.
Thank you. At present, we are a healing and deliverance and biblical counseling ministry. We do more one-on-one deliverance and biblical counseling. We do once-a-month prayer lines. We minister to people struggling with addictions to drugs, alcohol, pornography, et cetera, and minister to women who are victims of domestic violence. We also have a seniors over 60 program, SOS, where we help connect seniors with community resources according to their needs, such as the area agency on aging, the Department of Human Services, senior housing and medical supplies. We assist them in filling out their applications if needed. We purchased food and clothing for families in need. We provided monies for the utilities. We help settle disputes for the elderly. Ninety-five percent of the time, the problem is simply a misunderstanding due to a language barrier or education barrier. And if we can't help them, we refer them to someone who can. We also help interpret for those with a language barrier. We have a senior bingo night, a once-a-month movie night, Bible studies. And we're also in the process of getting an adult women's faith-based fitness class together to shed off those extra COVID calories. The class will be called Faith Step. We're mainly a ministry of helps. We have funded these programs out of our personal monies, but are no longer in a position to do so. That is why we are requesting a zone change to office commercial with the proposed use as a Christian bookstore, and I understand that to a later time, as a Christian bookstore selling faith-based books, products, and gifts to help keep the ministry in operation. We are not a nonprofit organization of any kind. We are not tax exempt. We pay property taxes and taxes on everything else as well. Thank you. Any questions?
Anyone have questions for the applicant?
I'm just curious, if the bookstore, will that be like a donation, or will it be for profit or anything? How's that work?
Profit to fund the ministry.
This property was listed for sale recently. Is it still on the market for sale?
Yes, it's been on the market for nine months. At the time that we listed it, there was, I believe, 16 churches for sale in San Angelo. I'm not sure how many else are for sale, but with this being a conditional use as a ministry and/or a house, it's a bit of a tough sell.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. This, this building is, presents a lot of challenges, I think, because it's, it looks like a commercial building. It's operating as a commercial building in many aspects, but it's in a residential area. And the applicant alluded to other properties that are listed for sale that are churches, and I think that converting those uses to non-church-related activities is very challenging and difficult. This property has frontage on a road that connects to Bryant. There's traffic lights not far.
Yes.
And MLK is a block or block and a half over.
Right. And we're hoping that this option instead is better, because the CO, like I said, they cannot have all of the abundance of retail uses that a CN or a CG would allow in particular, and we understand the neighborhood's concerns. So we think doing the CO with a conditional use that could put appropriate conditions on for that faith-based bookstore and still allow the church to continue would be maybe better for that neighborhood than just opening up to all retail uses. So we understand that. This is kind of, I guess, maybe a compromise, and something that would allow them to move forward, but still not to stray on the traffic network. It's a, you know, a coffee shop.
You know, very often churches are in residential areas, so that's kind of a normal.
Yes.
Here. I would like to make a motion to approve this as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
So three two.
Three two. Brendan is, I believe that stands because it's a simple majority. Is that right?
Yeah, I think it's right.
Okay.
All right, next item is conditional uses. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Deals may be directed to the city council. CU 22-12, 24 East College Avenue, request for approval of a conditional use to allow a telecommunications facility with tower and related equipment in the central business district located at 24 East College Avenue, San Angelo, Tom Green County.
Okay, Sam, you really did it now. It's coming now. Here we go. All right. So this went to DHRC last month for design approval. It's a telecommunications tower. It means a conditional use. It's owned CBD. The CBD does not require the Section 426 standards, so those are more strict, where you can only, setbacks have to be 20% of height of the tower, so it just goes by the CBD, which is a 25-foot front yard, no side or rear yards. The applicant has got their tower way beyond that. It's gonna be on the back of the church property, so they're leasing a space in the back here for Verizon, and it would be, the tower will be co-locatable, will be a monopole design, and will be painted a light gray color that was approved by the DHRC. So I'm just gonna go over this real quick. The church parks the school buses back there right now, but it's gonna be less visible in that back corner. We'll be able to see it from College Avenue, not so much from the South Oak side where Shannon parking lot is. So those are the property pictures. They'll also have a seven-foot brick, concrete wall going around it as well, which will match the red brick on the church across the street and some of the other buildings in the neighborhood. So again, that'll provide some additional screening. There's the church across the street. And then that's their site plan that they gave us. So again, here's College Avenue, there's Oak Street. Be 115 feet tall, and the paint color will have to match what the DHRC approved. And there's the brick wall that's gonna go around it. So again, pretty straightforward case. They're 190 feet from West College Avenue. They only need to be 25 feet. They're 172 feet back from North Oak Street in compliance with the CBD setback. So that's support. Six conditions of approval are pretty standard, so no more than one tower on the property, 150 feet maximum, get a building permit from permits. Any equipment are screened with the seven-foot tall wall is approved by the DHRC. Show the final latitude, longitude, or coordinates for GIS tracking. Tower is co-locatable, so meet number five, and then submit a Form 7460 to the FAA. That's just the standard policy to make sure that the FAA has seen it. So applicant is here, and I believe has a short PowerPoint following mine, so we can open that up for discussion if you all have any questions for staff.
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Open it up for public comment.
Morning, commissioners. Been a while since I've been in San Angelo, so still a beautiful town. Thank you for hearing me. Real quick, I'm gonna go through this without, backwards. It's been a while. I think the last one we did here was six years, but Verizon's really putting a lot of emphasis on San Angelo in the last decade. The situation on this one, you can see the site location very close to where we are right now, is capacity and coverage, but it's mostly capacity. We're gonna explain that in a little bit. As Jeff said, basically back in the parking lot, wall's gonna match what the design committee said. They want to match the masonry wall with the church brick, so it's gonna look something like that. Rather than reading this to you, basically, it's, the phones, the apps, the things that we're running, you guys know this, just exploding the infrastructure. So what we're doing is, there's this one over here by 67, and that industrial complex is the closest one. You'll see it on the map. It's overloaded, and it needs some drop-off. So by putting 110-foot monopole in this area, it's going to be able to pick and serve better. They do show, oh, and these are things that you already know about, you know, the telemed stuff going on, cars that notify 911 when there are bags deployed, stuff like that. It's all over the wireless network. So here's the good stuff. Basically, red is good in-building coverage. These look like Doppler weather mats, but blue and green are not. They're in-vehicle only. You can see the one we're talking about just right up here. It said, that is a big footprint for red. And you can see, most of downtown is a little bit struggling for in-building coverage. And I know mine's showing two bars in this building, but we're really looking at some areas down further closer to the river. And that's what happens when you turn this one on air. That's a big improvement in coverage, especially for 911 calls in the area. But here's the big thing also. It's gonna pick up where that Highway 67 intersection one drops off. In other words, we're making a phone call. We're not grabbing that tower. We're gonna grab this one downtown. Here's a photo, Sam, what we had to do for some state requirements. I think that's Roosevelt Hotel remodeled there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you can see, barely see it in the background. I thought I circled it there. I don't even know. You can see it right there behind the Roosevelt Hotel. Again, apps, everything running, we're doing, I don't know how many I have, 20-something, and they're all running currently on that tower. Another one, minor or major thing during COVID, it backed everything backwards. We had the downtown empty, we had the suburbs full. So now they're trying to install more in that area too, because of the system. So if you have any questions, let me know. I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Discussion items, for information only, no action required. Z2202, Chavern Corridor Historic District. Do you want me to read all three of these in at the same, or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to adopt a new historic district in downtown San Angelo, generally located north of the Canto River, east of North Irving Street, south of East Fourth Street, west of South Oak Street. Revisions, item B, revisions to zoning ordinance for historical properties. Public hearing and consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Planning and Development of the City Code of Ordinances, Exhibit A, zoning ordinance, Sections 211, Historic Overlay Zone, amending the criteria and process for a certificate of appropriateness and demolitions, and establishing an administrative process. Item C, adopting historic guidelines. Public hearing and consideration of a resolution adopting the city's historic preservation design guidelines for the central business district and expanding the boundary north to Fourth Street.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna keep this very brief, because this is just a discussion item. This is going to city council tomorrow for a final vote. The DHRC last Thursday approved all of the three changes, so basically, the first item is a new historic district in San Angelo. And we had originally talked about sending this back to you all. We had this as a discussion item, if you remember, several months back. And the state law requires actually that the DHRC is the approval authority, not planning commission, but we still wanted you in the loop, so you guys knew what was going on. Basically, all of these properties in the red, within the red that are historical, if they're, and the red dots or the orange dots, that's medium and high priority, they will need a historical review called a certificate of appropriateness, and that would be reviewed by DHRC. The second item we looked at was creating an administrative process that would allow some of those minor changes to be approved by the planning director instead. And so if you're just changing the paint color on a historic building in this new district, you wouldn't have to come back to the DHRC and pay the higher fee. You could just go to the planning director and approve it. So that was one of the things that we had looked at. The third, as part of that, was to codify the process, so just to spell that out. So again, the red and the orange dots within that district will need a certificate of appropriateness. The yellow, called the lower priority, would just need a downtown overlay approval, which is what they do right now. All of these properties are downtown. The difference is, the historic would be a higher standard. The difference is, the historic would be a higher standard. And that brings me to my, the third item, which is expanding and approving and expanding this boundary here in the blue and in the yellow. What is that? That's the central business district historic guidelines. We've had those since 2010, but we've never actually had those officially adopted by city council. We wanted, those are done by staff, we believe, and we're pretty, providing, Chair Stripling, you talked about that when we did this discussion item, about more clarity for the public and explaining the process. So we think that those guidelines, in addition to the criteria and the zoning ordinance, would be good. So basically, number one is approving the map. Number two is changing the text of the ordinance to have that process, what can be done administratively, what can go to DHRC. And then thirdly is allowing us to review the city's historic guidelines as well. And I'll just skip ahead here. Notifications we did get, just again, this is really for council, but 144 property owners were affected. Some of them, about 30, were already historically designated, but they are in that, in that map. But that was the total, and we also did the 200-foot notice as well. So of course, more responses came in. We did get seven in support and 12 in opposition so far. And that, that's pretty much it. You guys are somewhat familiar with this already. This is the CBD district guidelines, so that's kind of what they would look at if we had a historical review, certificate of appropriateness. Those guidelines, again, they're not set in stone, you must do this or you must do that, but they give staff as well as the public some guidelines as to developing. We even have a color palette that was created in those guidelines. And so if you're, you know, I have a building that's 100 years old, but it's been really deteriorated and converted into something that we don't like, and now I want to develop it downtown and bring it back to what it looked like in 1900, or they could go by that 1900 palette and use one of these colors, and we would say, yes, that's good. Or they could get a color that's somewhat generally consistent with this. It doesn't have to be exactly this color palette, but generally consistent, and we would approve that as well. So what does this do? It's just going to basically make a process. The biggest thing is that they can't just come in and demolish a building downtown. It's going to protect her downtown and keep those, at least the shells of those buildings protected. If they want to do a demolition on any of those properties, they'll have to come in and get a historic approval. So at least it protects that from happening. And then we get into the design, the colors and materials, which is a little bit more subjective, but we do believe with these historic guidelines being adopted, it will be much easier. And of course, the administrative process. Everything had to go to the DHRC. I'm changing a paint color, I got to go to DHRC. I'm adding a sign that's 10 square feet, I got to go to DHRC. This will allow the planning director to approve those, those changes. So goes to council tomorrow, and depending on what council does. It was approved five zero at the DHRC on Thursday. So this is, again, no voting today. This is just a discussion item for anything that you, you wanted to add, or any thoughts, or?
So on the administrative approval process, what if it's not approved? What if it's declined? Is there an appeal process? Does that then move to the, what it was, I guess, before, where they go to the DHRC?
That's correct. So if, if it's denied by the planning director, or if the planning director, let's say it turns out to be something, it may fall within administrative, but we think it's really something that DHRC should handle, he can refer that to the DHRC. So he can either deny or refer, or approve. So yeah, so then it would go on to DHRC for a vote. And then there's another process, if the DHRC doesn't want to approve it, they could then appeal that all the way to council.
I like the direction this is headed. And we've talked about the transparency of the guidelines, and I think the more, the more detailed you can be about what's, what you want to see, what would be permitted downtown, the better. I think, I think developers want predictability. The unknown is what terrifies folks that are investing in areas like this. The thought of walking in and, and relying on the opinions of five or six people to determine the fate of your project is scary.
We think this will be helpful as well. We had a case a couple of months ago where I think it was on South Oaks or South Chaburn, and the building was, was in really bad shape. The frontage, the facade was all deteriorated. It didn't look like anything. We never found out exactly what it looked like 100 years ago, but the applicant did a pretty good job, used those, you know, those pediments and cornices and used that kind of design that they may, I don't know if they got it out of the guidebook, we had sent it to them, but they, they followed something like that, and at least it looked much better than, than what it, what it did look afterwards.
That's great. Okay. Anyone else have thoughts they'd like to share?
I think it's just, it's important to understand that, I mean, they are very old buildings, and a lot of them have been vacant for a long time, so there's going to be, there has to be an understandable approach to, we're going to have to demo some of them. I mean, it's just, you don't have a choice.
Yeah.
But you also want to maintain the character of downtown, you know? So it's kind of hard to find the balance, but I think it's, I think we're on a good path.
We appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
Public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, and begin by stating their name and address, single member district number. Please limit all your remarks to less than three minutes. Open for public comment. I'm going to close public comment now because there's no one here. Directors report.
Didn't really have much. Just wanted to mention, we do have a new staff planner promotion of a current employee into that vacant position that we had. I also wanted to mention our planning manager is out on medical leave for an indeterminate time, and so we, even though we just filled a position, we will be short-staffed for a little while longer as well. That's all I had.
Okay. Future meeting agenda and announcements. The next regular meeting of the planning commission is scheduled to begin at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, July 18th. Adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. It's 10:38 a.m.
Thank you all.